Mountain Falls Board of Trustees Meeting for today, Tuesday, July 20th will come to order. The time is 7:06. At this time, I would ask for a roll call of present trustees.
Kathryn Guthrie.
Margaret Peterson.
Chris Quinn.
Are all present, so we have a quorum. At this time, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda as presented?
I have one. I would like to pull Item C of the consent agenda. And I would like to request executive session for contract negotiations and also for personnel matters. CRS 24-6-402E is for contract negotiations. I do not have the CRS for personnel immediately handy. And do you want to do that at this meeting? Or would we like to table and have an executive session at the following meeting?
I would like to at least have the executive session. We would need to have that prior to our adjournment, which would be prior to the work session.
Okay.
So I would make that Item 10 and two subsequent items down a step each.
Okay.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's no further discussion on those? Yes.
Sorry, just clarifying the motion. Is it for executive session and contract negotiations plus personnel and removing Item C from the consent agenda?
Not removing Item C, moving Item C down to later. Well, yeah, removing it, I guess, because we're going to add it to later in the agenda.
You would want to add an executive session. That's one motion. You want to make Item C its own item as Number 10. So let's take the first one first. Add an executive session. All those in favor, and that was the second by Kathryn.
I'll second that, yes.
All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
I think I heard him.
Chris, can you say that again?
That's an aye.
All right. And the second item in that motion, since we split it out, is to add the town manager contract as an open item as Number 10, and then move adjournment to 11 and contract to 12. Kathryn, is that a second?
I will second.
Before we jump, can you clarify that one for me again, too?
So we've added an executive session.
Okay.
We want to discuss Item C after the executive session. So, yeah, if the executive session is Item 10, then Item C would be Item 11. Adjournment would be 12. Work session would be 13.
Thank you.
Perfect. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And that motion passes. All right, Item 3 is the consent agenda, which has been amended to accounts payable from June 25th to July 16th, and the Board of Trustees' meeting minutes from June 29th. Would any board member like to call out either of those two items for discussion? And I would move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very good, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the Stilling Basins Project Update. Angie, were you prepared to discuss that?
Absolutely, so Andre Bracken on Zoom, and he's here with his proposal of ending the contract.
All right, Andre wants to proceed, you can proceed.
Good evening, this is Andre Bracken. Thanks for having me tonight, Honorable Mayor and Board of Trustees. The contract proposal that I have before you is for the Stilling Basins. As we talked in a previous board hearing, what I've done is put together basically the fee proposal. And it is, as I discussed in the last hearing, we completed the first phase of the overall project, which was to do drainage study. And what basically, what the study drainage flows in the town area basically tells us is that we believe that we can get some value in the two stilling basin locations that we've identified that are currently being used as small neighborhood parks. And what we would do is plan and design these such that the park area could still be used as park areas, but it would have a small detention area for capture of sediment and basically stilling or settling, settling out that could be pulled out, you know, basically kind of a road maintenance kind of action. I don't have a lot more detail to present than the proposal. As I'd mentioned the last time, what we're looking at doing is first getting some surveyors in utility locators out there in the two locations, in verifying underground what we've got as far as basically, you know, things out there that would preclude us from either doing the project at all or would make the area so small that we can't really get any value in it. So we'll make that determination first and then come back to the town manager and provide her a brief report on our findings there after the survey and the utility locates. Hopefully, we will not find anything that will preclude us from continuing on. These are going to be fairly small settling basins, but I think we'll get a fair amount of bang for the buck. I think this is pretty much is what was intended in the original RTA scope as far as settling basins. There's really no area where you can put a large pond within the town for this purpose. So what we're doing is taking advantage of what we can find to put a series of small ponds. The overall scope includes construction plans, you know, basically the drawings and the specifications and all that's required to to go out with a bid proposal to get a contractor to build these. We're expecting somewhere on the idea of, let's say, 12 to 14 weeks total time with on the site as far as the utility investigation and then the design process to get to a point where we can symbolize plans and then advertise out. So it put potential advertising, the project construction in early fall, which kind of works well with the seasons here as far as construction. Construction on these will probably take on the order of four to six weeks tops. If that long, again, that really has the schedule as much to do with what we find underground, any kind of utilities. The lack of any utility issues there, we can probably get it built probably within four weeks. You got any questions for me?
Andre, how is this going to change the appearance of the parks?
Definitely would change the, I guess, the elevation of the parks in such way you would not have basically as much of a sloping hillside. There would be more of a terrace for the ponding area. But what we would do is design it such that, of course, it would be landscaped, would be basically whatever native grasses there are there today, or if it's basically, we'd replace it with the same type of vegetative cover that's there. So it essentially would look the same, other than the grading will be a little different. And you'll have a small depressed area in the two locations. They can still be used for park benches. The use will remain the same, but the grades will be a little different. And the intent would be to not take out any trees, of course, to avoid tree roots and just kind of work around that. With these, with small detention ponds, you kind of have the ability to shape these things to make the best of the existing topography and land features. And so that's what we do. We probably do a couple of quick grading studies and run through that with the town manager and even bring that back to the board here, if you'd like, to look at a couple of quick ideas on these.
All right, Angie, this all falls well within the scope of our PPRTA. Board, do you have any questions? All right, that was for information only. There's no vote required. So if there's nothing else.
Well, there's a contract, so the information will probably actually decide.
Okay. Okay, and so the payments this time, and it is for this work that was just outlined, correct?
I'm sorry, I really can't hear what, I suppose that's Angie talking?
I'll speak up, I'll try to project a little bit.
Thanks.
So this will be for $75,000 for the Stilling Basins project, which was a PPRTA project that went on the ballot a few years before I got here. This was prior to my arrival. But this, if this contract is approved, this is a new engineering and property management of the construction. But not for the construction, construction we did out through a bidding process, and this covers that as well.
Okay, and just for clarification, this is to mitigate some of, at least some of the gravel that comes off the hills and goes into the lake. And we have been pressed to preserve the lake as best we can for many years. And this is a good step in that direction, which is why we proposed stilling basins in the first place way back in the day. So, Ward?
It sounds good. I'm really glad we can preserve the parks. We can do that. Oh, yes. And it's really part of the larger vision for the most work.
So is there a motion to approve the contract?
I move that we approve the contract.
With Andre Bracken and Wilson Company. Yeah.
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 And that motion passes. The next item on the agenda is PPRTA, new membership support, which is for the town of Calhoun. Many years ago, when PPRTA started, different communities were given the option to become part of the PPRTA, which is a taxing body. It's for regional transit. It was joined by El Paso County, Colorado Springs, Three Mountain Falls, Manitou Fountain, no, not Fountain. Almost Fountain, but not. Rayma joined later. And Calhoun is wishing to join as well. Now, the difference is with joining at this late date is they don't believe they get the project money. They get the update money. So when we get our money, we get money for projects like the Stilling Basin, which is voted on by the taxpayers. But we also get a share of the PPRTA, which goes to yearly maintenance. And when towns join later, they don't get both of those parts. They get one or the other. The advantage to, of course, having another group join is that it expands the tax base. So at least from my conversations, there's not a lot of downside. We actually would see a little decrease at first because they haven't been putting in, I mean, very small. But then with expanding the tax base, we just go up from there. And they want to join, and it would be hard for us to not have them join. But for that is for your discussion, if you have any further.
Well, I'd move to support Calhoun in this effort.
I agree, I agree. Is that a motion?
Yes, I move to support this. I move to support their effort of town of Calhoun.
Second that.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
That motion passes, and I think Calhoun will be very happy, and I know PPRTA will be pleased. So thank you on that. Moving right along. Whoa, municipal code rewrite project. As you know, we have been in the midst of trying to rewrite this for some time. It has been turned over to the attorney for their rewrite. It is long overdue, and we don't expect to read the entire code tonight. But it would be a big plus if we could just spend some time on it and sometime at every meeting until this is done.
Just letting the attorney know that we're on, ready to go.
Katie Vera.
So Katie Vera is an associate with the office, and she will be presenting the municipal computer to y'all. We were wondering if you prefer a presentation style, or if there's any questions that you just wanted to go into.
I would like a presentation style, and it might help us spur some questions. I like my click notes version here, and I certainly have made a lot of notes in the margin. But I'd like to see what they're presenting so we can. Perfect.
Hey Katie, go ahead and try and share your screen.
Yeah, sure thing. One second. Can you see that?
Here, I'm going to play it for once.
Oh, no, of course.
No.
Oh, yeah, you're way better.
Katie. All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, Katie. We're on a projector. You might have to zoom in a little bit for us to be able to see.
Okay, one second.
I'll let you know. Looking good, close? Everybody good?
Yeah, there's good.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Katie.
Yeah, no problem. So hi, everybody. Sorry, it was hard for me to hear everybody. I think Angie might be a little bit off screen. I think I overheard some of her introduction. But my name is Katie Vera. Good evening, everybody. As you know, or as Angie might have just said, I think, I've been working with her, working with the town marshal, and with Matt on this code project revision over the course of the past few months. And just for everybody's information as to like the process that we did, we generally just went a few chapters at a time and sent Angie and Matt just sort of click notes, memo, sort of like you guys have here today, of the major changes that we made to each chapter, just explaining what we did and why we did it. I think this is mentioned in the overview memo that you guys have. But, you know, basically, I think the last major code edits that were done to the code were maybe in the 90s. And even with that update in the 90s, there were a lot of old relics in the code. So I mean, for example, I think there was a provision in the animals section about not tying up the horse in town. So that's one example to illustrate some of the things we were working on. Marijuana was still legal in the code, so we had to update that. And we'll update it again if the town wishes to license any marijuana businesses in the future. I know that's been discussed. So I guess if you want me to break down chapter by chapter, I can do that. I don't have a formal presentation as far as that goes. As you can see here, Chapter 1, general provisions. Chapter 2 deals with administration of personnel. 4 is now moved up. And that was, sorry, one second. Okay, sorry, I think my screen might have gone off for a second. Can everybody still see?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that. My screen like went to something else. So, yes, Chapter 4 was moved up to Chapter 3, where we reorganized some things. Moving up chapters, as you can see here, it's pretty straightforward. So again, I can definitely field some sort of general questions, but I can give sort of the main changes we did in each chapter as well, if that would be beneficial right now. I think, you know, as we just do a general overview, this might raise some more questions for people. And definitely walk through some more specifics when we have more time at the next meeting.
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay. So Chapter 1, I think the main thing that I would address today is we sort of presented this option of decriminalizing some of the provisions in the code, which basically means that if something in the code, if we specifically outline that the fine for that violation would be less than $500 and would not be subject to any jail time, that's decriminalizing it. And then that would sort of help to avoid jury trials. Absent estate statute that requires jail time for a violation, you know, something minor, you would not have to provide a jury trial. So minor traffic offenses, for example, anything less than four points would be, you know, decriminalized. What we did do is we went ahead and moved up the maximum penalty for offenses from $1,000 to $2,650, just to sort of keep up with inflation and other towns' practices. So I think this is presented in the memo, but if we do want to go through the code and specifically decriminalize different provisions, that's something we can do, but we would just need more guidance as to what offenses the town would want to specifically decriminalize. Let's see, along that vein, just a simple change that was made, it's sort of technical. The definition of misdemeanor was removed. And instead, we just mentioned code violations. Misdemeanor is a legal term, and again, if we do want to decriminalize some of these offenses, we don't want to refer to misdemeanors. So Chapter 2 provides for a lot of different procedures as to term limits, different city positions, personnel, job duties, descriptions, that sort of thing. There was an amendment to the Constitution in 1994 to limit term limits. So I think before the code allowed for the mayor to have four two-year terms, and now that's down to three two-year terms. And again, if you, anybody have any big questions, we can definitely look at moving in detail if that's something we want to do.
I had a question.
Yeah, sure.
I was looking at your memo under changes to Section 2, Section 220 and 221. It says that these were removed and be adopted in a policy regarding hailing town business at public meetings. When I'm looking at the code here, I see that 221 is composition term of office and power for mayor and Board of Trustees. Am I just confused at what I'm looking at?
You know what? I was looking at that too, because I was trying to identify with some of the sections getting deleted. I think things got moved around. So actually, yeah, 220 and 221 were originally dealing with setting agendas and board packets for meetings and also for calling order of business. So that was something that was a little more procedural rather than something that needs to be outlined in the code. And I think that we sent sort of a separate form to Angie of, you know, hey, these are the things that are more procedural that could perhaps be housed in some kind of infernal procedure somewhere else, so.
Right, just handle it in policy. I get that. It's just the section references were off, and I was kind of trying to follow along from your memo.
Yeah, I know, I noticed that too. So I can make an edit to that and resend that if that would be a little more helpful for when we go through this next time.
Thank you.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
I think we need more explanation on 223. This was an ordinance that was put into place not too long ago. And discusses quite a bit about when there's a workshop and when there's public hearing. And when it was drawn up, of course, it was drawn up with the attorney saying this is what we needed to do.
Sorry, maybe I missed your question?
I don't understand. I just want to know what the change is on Section 2-23.
Okay. Um, one second. Sorry, my dog knocked around. She's making a lot of noise. So I think 223, and this is already in your memo, the hearing process for ordinance adoption was removed. I'm not sure how recently that was done.
It was within the last 10 years.
Okay.
Than that, probably maybe six.
Okay. I can definitely look into that more and sort of give you more details on, you know, why.
Not even why so much, I just want to make sure we're following the right procedure.
Okay.
So, yeah, sometime I'd like to have a little bit more on that.
Okay, yeah, no problem. We can definitely break that down at the next meeting and I mean, I think my impression is that I feel like I don't have a good explanation for you right now, but I can definitely get back to you. But just had a hearing. I, I feel like I don't have a good explanation for you right now, but I can definitely get back to you, but just that a hearing isn't required, um, just for adoption of ordinances and it's, hearing processes would maybe be more appropriate in other instances, so maybe for zoning code changes or specific instances, but for the most part, ordinance adoption is just, um, uh, adopted by the board of trustees. But I don't know if that answers your question or is a good explanation, so I can definitely have a better answer for you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we, I'd like to discuss that one a little more in depth at the next meeting.
Okay, no problem. Um, so, i- if it would be helpful, I could put up the memo. So everybody can just look at it right now.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Let me zoom in a little bit.
Does, is that, can you read that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, so this two twenty-three is what we were just talking about and what we can um, address at the next meeting.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm sorry, I'm reading two twenty, section two twenty-three as mayor pro temp in the actual code.
Yeah, and that's part of that adjusted. Right now, I think we're looking at
Okay.
the notes, and the notes have the corrected versions to twenty-three.
Yeah, and you know what? It might be more helpful to just have the older version and the new version, just so we can compare.
So I'm looking at the one online right now. That should be our current code that you're referring to in these titles, yeah?
Yeah, so, um, two twenty-three, I think, might be the new section, and I think that's the confusion.
Yeah, it would be more helpful to add the actual under changes, the sections that you're changing, match so that I can follow along.
Yeah, and let me see if I can also share with you, um, the compare version, if we want to go that in the weeds right now, um.
Yeah, I mean, not on any particular item. I'm just, as I'm, I'm reading through the memo, none of these, even in chapter four, they're not matching out, so I'm completely lost on what sections of code you're actually talking about.
Okay.
I follow it.
Yeah, just give me one second. Let me bring up that compare version and see if that has these sections.
Not yet, but I, what I would like to see us do is, I would like us to, to see us have a template or a plan on how much of this elephant do we want to eat? Do we want to take one bite or two bites and let's, let's maybe plan for the next meetings, okay, we'll work on diligently getting through section one or one and two, or, or, you know, I really like to see us.
And if we can, have we compare the old and the new together, so we can look side by side. I think that would clarify a lot of Chris's questions, and it would show a lot of things that are being deleted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did send that back out to everyone in huge like folder, so you have the compared documents as well as the new version. Um, you can put the computer, it was in the board packet. Uh, we were just trying to keep that among the pieces down.
Right.
But whatever strategy works best, we'll do that.
Well, maybe if we decide, okay, let's do section one at the next meeting, let's just do all the docs for section one. Would that work?
It's a little bit easier to be done and.
Okay. Like one and two, two or three sections, and that would be a small file.
And there are some that are really short, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear. Apologies, I can't hear what she's saying, but, uh, yeah, I think, I'm sorry to interject, but, uh, yeah, I think just setting aside some time at every board meeting and just get through what we get through, I think we would probably knock out a lot of this, but, you know, I think it would be helpful for transparency to, for everyone to kind of see how it, you know, what changes are actually being made and and having this, you know, the, the memo is helpful, I just, it's just not lining up reference wise and.
Well.
Sorry.
Yeah, so that all the chapters and everything are included in the year two package as well.
Yeah.
I was just gonna include.
It's just like trying to go back and forth with them.
In there every time, so that it has many times out there.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So the packets will be there, but we can just get to it.
Well, it's electronic, so.
Yeah.
It's fine. I don't care how long they are when they're on electronic version. But let's do some role of trying to hit three each time. That way we aren't perpetually putting something off or something else.
Sorry, and I was having a hard time hearing Angie. Can, can you guys just repeat what Angie just said?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we were planning on scheduling just three chap, you know, two, three chapters of each meeting.
Okay.
Um, but we're gonna keep putting it into the packet higher up again, so that it's out there in the public for only a certain period of time, we will really have an opportunity to uh preview it.
Okay.
Did you hear me? Okay.
Okay, so do we want to keep going through now, or do we, like, do we want to try and do chapter one now, or do we, what do we want to do?
You want to do, want to jump in and just try to get as much as you can done happening?
Well, I think we have a level of frustration of not being able to see, um.
With the section numbers.
Right, just having to go back and forth through the documents.
So if we had chapters one and three, compare versions, and we can have the memo, then I think there will be a lot less confusion about what we're looking at. Because as it is right now, we can't see what Chris can't see. We can only see what each other's saying right now.
Yeah, I, I've got, um, the current code pulled up and the memo, and I'm referencing the changes, you know, by the heading, and when I go to the article or section mentioned, it's, it's talking about something completely different than what's in the memo.
So you, you should, and you should have the compare version, I think. Uh, and I think that was in the packet at the very end. I'm not, I think.
Okay.
I think Angie mentioned that, did she?
I'm looking at the packet that's in the forties here, page, page, uh, let me see.
Okay, was the compare version included for your packet?
Starting on page.
It's the one in, it's the one in the packet, yeah, starts on page forty.
That's the memo.
Um, and then all of the actual chapters are filings eventually.
Yeah, starts on page forty-eight with the red line.
But I think what Chris is saying is some of the things that were deleted have changed the numbering, and he can't follow along between the old and the new.
Yeah, I can, I can go through the, the redheaded matter here, but this thing is so cluttered up with just formatting changes, it's kind of hard. Yeah, but I, I, I guess I try to find it that way, it's just.
It's not gonna be redheaded, Chris.
Yeah, I've, I've never tackled a beast this big, and it is, uh, it's hard for me too, because I can't see what's like, I mean, I, I know it's being presented on my screen, but it's hard for me to see what you guys are saying, so.
I'm sure we've all had documents like this, like, oh my gosh. But at least if, if there was a way to remove some of the formatting stuff, because it's really not germane to changes.
Right.
You know, I don't know if there's a way to do that quickly. But, uh, yeah, I, I understand what's happening now. I, I, with your memo, I have to find that related section, whatever it was changed to in these pictures, that are redlined.
Yeah, so, for, for next meeting, why don't I do this? Um, I will, um, I think in the compare version, so, for example, right now, I'm looking at two twenty-three, and that's the adoption of ordinance section, um, so that does match up. But just to make it easier, I think in the memo, um, I'm gonna edit and actually include the title, which would be pretty helpful, for one. Um, you know, two twenty-three was adoption of ordinances.
Right, and I can see that one, two twenty-three.
Yeah, but.
Those are your edits, so.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying. Right now, it's cluttered, it's hard to follow what's in the old version, what's in the new version. Um, so next time when we're doing breakdown of each chapter, um, we can do, you know, two twenty-three adoption of ordinances is now two thirteen, or what it may be, and I think that.
I, I think your memo was good, I just, it, it, I was looking to the actual code for the change to see what the code said, and then you were explaining the change, so that's how I was thinking that memo worked, but now I get it.
Okay. Um, so, I, again, I don't know if we just want a table going through specifics for next meeting, um, or if there's something else that we want to touch on right now.
Well, if you have any, uh, you know, low-hanging fruit on some of these chapters, we could, we could tackle it, there's not a lot of changes in them, and get those out of the way.
Okay, yeah, so we can definitely do that for a couple of them. Um, if you turn to, uh, what's now going to be chapter eleven, that's the annexation chapter. And I don't know if you want a second, um, to pull that up at the end of your packet, I can also pull that up. That one's really straightforward.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Let me just pull that up.
This is like trying to find my birthday on one of those things online. It takes forever.
There are bookmarks at these days here.
Yeah, every chapter's bookmarked in PDF.
Well.
Do you know?
No, I found it. So, thank you for the technological assistance. So it's on page three and four. This is chapter eleven. Yeah, I don't have chapters, I don't have the real line. Oh, I don't know what.
Do you want to have to put marks?
I don't have this. I don't have PDF, let's pull it up on the website.
Okay, and can, can y'all see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so the annexation chapter was previously repealed. Um, this is a sample, we kind of co-opted off a different town. Um, it's pretty straightforward. I don't know how many annexation applications the town gets. Um, but when there is somebody wanting to annex a property to the town, this sort of outlines that, and since it wasn't in the code, there are no red lines. Um, this makes it kind of easy to look at right now in its format. So, um, it provides for, um, applications for annexation into the town, um, how the planning commission will review those applications, uh, what the supplemental requirements are for the property that's trying to be annexed. Um, required dedications of any easements or right-of-way to the town as well, are down here. Sorry, I don't want to scroll too fast, so just let me know if you want me to move it down.
I'm good, you can proceed.
Okay. Um, so these are the dedications, um, again, to rights of way, um, public streets, and for the required title for any of those easements.
Looks good.
Um, and I think that's it for this one.
Oh, looks good. Any questions on that one? So, can we choose to approve this and then take it off? For us?
Uh, Katie, what would be the ideal preference? Would it be to go through and sort of check markees and then approve all at once at a later time, just in case we have modifications or come across things in other chapters? Or would it be best to just approve chapter eleven now and then work on another chapter? What do you think is the best strategy here?
Um, I think what we can do is just sort of cross it off our list right now, if we think it looks good to form. Um, just with numbering, we do have to cross-check is with Nina Williams, who's working on the zoning chapter. Um, just to make sure her chapters are aligning. So I, I think it might be better to just kind of go through, um, sort of reflect in the agenda, um, at the next meeting, which chapters we went through, any additional questions, and then I think it might honestly be best to repeal and reenact the code all at once, once we're done with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Hey Katie, on this, uh, this one you have up, this section eleven-two?
Yes.
Um, so the planning commission, reviews and comments, provides a recommendation to board trustees, is there an approval process for the board trustees in this?
I think the board of trustees will formally approve, um, I think the board of trustees will formally approve, um, of the annexation, will make a recommendation, but then final approval will be with the board of trustees.
Okay, I was just wondering if that was in this section.
Um, if it's not.
In the article.
Yeah, it's not in this section, it's not, um, I guess the procedure isn't directly outlined in the section. Um, it might be helpful to have a subsection that does clarify that.
Or just add to the board of trustees for approval.
Yeah, sorry, did you, did you say just note that it will go to the board of trustees for approval?
Or just add for approval at the end of the section.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Cross-reference that, chapter three.
It's also, I believe, in chapter three, when it talks about boards and commissions and their, uh, duties and powers.
Okay, good note Angie, thanks. Um, so we can move along and look at chapter 18, which is building code. If you guys wanna do that right now?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, and Chris, to your point, I think it does, sort of, when you include all the track changes, I think it does include all of the formatting, which kind of clogs up this track changes in the right panel. I'm not sure if there's a simple way to accept all the changes, um.
Yeah, I don't know, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you can go to review.
Mm-hmm.
Um, track changes on and click the off to your left.
Yeah.
How that works. And then, um, do no markup.
Okay, so this will take us to the clean version, um, and we can sort of toggle back and forth between the marked up version and unmarked version. I'm just gonna include the markup, um, for a second, just so we can look at the major sections that were deleted. And we did adopt a newer fire code. Um, the 2018 edition of the international fire code is what a lot of towns have been using and updating too. Um, and then. Let me just show. I'm not sure if you saw that in the marked up version, but article three of the chapter used to be revocable permits. Um, so that was concerning permits for placing things in the right-of-way, um, so that includes like newspaper stands, kiosks, um, so like any other sort of thing that would block the right-of-way, and we didn't, uh, remove that from the code. All we did was we moved it into chapter seven, which is, um, public streets, sidewalks, it talks about snow removal and easements and things like that. So it was a little more fitting to put that into, um, that chapter.
Yeah, that kinda makes sense.
Yeah, um, my only other note on this is that the 2017, um, regional building code also includes, um, an electrical code and a plumbing code. Um, so it encompasses a few different types of codes. I don't know if there's any questions on that, that one's not really a big one.
No, that looks, that looks good, the, uh, that's the current code region was using.
Yeah, and I don't, I think the PPRBC, I think that periodically updates on its own. And I guess we must have updated to the 2017 kinda recently.
Yeah, they updated it in like January 2019.
Okay.
So we can start a board of.
No, I'm satisfied with 18.
Okay, so we can look at chapter seven, um. Actually, I'm gonna sort of jump, skip around to chapter four, um, that one's quite short too, and I think that we can kind of knock it out really quick. Um, so this is the franchises chapter, and, um, what we did is we removed all the franchises, um, from the code, so the actual sort of body of the franchise agreements that the town had with, um, I think Comcast and some other utilities, they were actually in the code. Um, and we went ahead and took all of those out.
Good.
Who ordered them, I think, those with the page of use.
Good.
For sure, no, that needed to be done, remember that one?
So chapter four looks great, yeah, short and sweet. I was worried about all the red line, it was like. But now it makes sense, yeah.
That makes sense, because they shouldn't be in ordinances anyway, especially if it brings. Chapter updated.
Right, every time, every time changes.
Yeah, so basically what we're left with is outlining, you know, the town's authority on franchise, what these franchises are, or where they are, um, term compensation and restrictions on entering into franchises.
Right, that makes a lot more sense.
Okay, um, so that's good, so that can take care of four, 11, and 18, and I'm just marking that down, kinda keep track of what we go through.
That's good, it helps us have a sense of accomplishment for this session.
I'm not getting it on.
Yeah, I'm not getting it anyway.
Um, okay, so I can start going into chapter seven, uh, that's, uh, public streets, sidewalks, um, and I'll pull that one up. All right, so, can I have that?
So it's full chapter seven or a new chapter?
Yeah, that's a little confusing, this is new chapter seven, and it's actually after chapter eight in the memo, so that's a little confusing. Um, so as I kinda note in the memo, a lot of chapter seven sort of contain these lengthy procedural provisions, and some of that was like really detailed technical specifications of, um, drilling below the surface, public rights of way, um, and like real process for construction in the right-of-way, um, bonds, insurance. So I kind of condensed all of that, have one process, um, for construction in the right-of-way, and we do have a separate document with all of those really technical procedures, um, that we can still have, but just sort of not bulk up, um, the chapter, this one's already a bit long, um, so if we don't get through it, we can keep working through it at the next meeting. Um, to begin with, there wasn't a clear section on snow removal, um, so there's a real basic snow and ice removal, um, section up here at the top. Um, again, you'll, you'll sort of see that like some of this was condensed up into these first few sections, and it's now gonna be applicable to the rest. So maintaining sidewalks, removing debris, there was a lot of instances of, you know, on this part of your property, you have to maintain your sidewalk, and it was like in three different sections, and instead it kind of now applies to everything. Um, so this is basically laying out that whenever a property owner fails to install proper sidewalks, you know, this is the requirement that one has.
We don't have sidewalks, we don't have sidewalks right now, but just in case you have a big sidewalk.
Right, that's.
Oh, not, I don't, right, I'm sorry.
What, what's that?
Did you say that there were not a lot of sidewalks in the town right now?
No, the town, um, it does not have sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there are some, um, bypasses or walkways that are painted on side of the road, but definitely not sidewalks. We will have some, but which would classify as sidewalks that are gonna be installed with the city project line. So there will be some sidewalks going into, I guess, it is, sorry, talking, so.
But it's not a property owner.
Right, right.
Of identity. So this is more form for the future than anything else, it's not really pertinent now.
Okay. Um, some of this would apply to, I guess, any sidewalk or frontage of private property owners, um, any buildup of snow or debris that could create a hazard to people walking by, but, um, I haven't been to Green Mountain Falls, so maybe I, I'm assuming there's sidewalks, but there's not sidewalks.
There's one, pretty good. The, the.
Okay, um. This kind of applies to any town, so any construction alteration or repair, um, and this is that process, which was again moved up, um, I think from being lowered down in the code.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, it makes sense to have a name here in case we ever go that direction, but it also applies to, um, cutting a trench in streets, alleys. Yeah, that's a big deal.
Yeah, I, any town streets, alleys, um, so even if it's not sidewalks, so any construction on publicly owned streets or rights of way.
Right.
Yeah, um. So restoration fee, that's just dealing with restoring any, any street that's repaired, uh, to its former state, and if it's not restored, then the town has recourse.
Of course, this is a huge one actually, because we've had that issue in the past with different utilities, and we have had to push them to restore.
Okay, good. Um, so again, insurance and indemnification, somebody constructing in the right-of-way, um, has to have some minimum liability insurance. And then these are just inspections for construction, uh, pre-construction and completed. I think another change is that throughout, there might have been references to, um, specific town officers or positions having to conduct certain things, um, and instead we've just generally referred to the town, so if the town is designating somebody to do these pre-construction inspections, the town can designate whoever they want without us specifying that a certain person has to do that.
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay. All right, so.
Katie, you still there?
Yes. Did you lose me?
Just for a little bit.
Okay, sorry. So I, I don't wanna go too fast, um, I don't think there are any ma- major changes right here. Um, this seven dash thirty-five is just providing that, um, any work done in public right-of-way, you know, has to provide the least interference with traffic, uh, utilities and anything else. Um, so just stop me if you, if you need to. So just stop me if you if you need to. Yeah, so I think an example is I don't know if this is kind of small on the side, on the left hand side here. But this was just like a chunky procedural requirement. So we got backfilling, compaction, resurfacing, and there's like gravel specifications. Again, these things we took out and we put into a different document in case the town requires, you know, this level of specification as to some of these construction projects. And they are pretty technical intense, so I couldn't really explain some of these to you. What they actually
I think we should. Yeah, it's a lot easier to edit that than it is.
Um, so this is kind of a basic article. It provides for the procedure of street numbering and naming. I was surprised that this is contained in codes, but a number of towns do this. So it is something that I left in.
We actually never numbered our town. The phone company numbered our town.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, there's some historical data.
Yeah.
I remember back in the old days when there weren't numbers.
When they asked for a number, we'd be like, we're number seven.
Um, and then the town has the power to name or rename any of the streets in the town. Which is sort of Um, so I would bring your attention to the private functions in the gazebo section. I know that's something the town does pretty often, so if if anybody has any comment on this, or if this isn't a reflection of what the town is doing as to this process, you can just let me know.
I did have a question on seven dash thirty-six.
Okay, yeah, let me
Yeah, sorry, go back up.
Bring it back up.
Um, right there. I think we ought to change that instead of a permit issued by the town marshal. It's a permit issued by the town.
Okay.
Sorry, Virgil.
Yeah, and that might just be an instance that we didn't catch. Okay.
I'm absolutely okay with that.
Alright, thank you. Come back to the gazebo.
Sorry, Katie, go ahead.
No, if anybody has a comment on this.
Would you guys entertain a question?
Yes.
What requirements are entailed, or is there any outlined on how I could refuse an application or what constitutes or allows me to do that specific things? Or I could refuse any of them for any reason? I don't know.
That's a power trip question.
No one's ever gonna read the gazebos review. No, of course not, but I just am curious how I'm limited in refusing applications.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Wouldn't that be apparent in the application as far as the type of event? If somebody wants to have like a like a rager?
I I I read this as in the event that the town could refuse an application. It doesn't say how or why I have to refuse that application or reference the policy in relation to that. And as much as I want unlimited power, I don't think this is necessarily appropriate.
I think it should reference a policy and I think we should establish more policy.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys have any guidelines? I mean, I'm sure you do, right? So you have Yeah, you have, you know, number of people, if there's going to be alcohol or not. I'm not sure if alcohol allowed here. So I think it would have to be in line with the application and if you don't have, you know, guidelines, maybe we want to say in accordance with the town guidelines or
Yeah, application and town guidelines, that that I think that would suffice.
Yeah, and I I do think that you you do have broad discretion in refusing applications, but you know, obviously, it couldn't be for any personal prejudice or anything like that.
So is this a chicken and an egg thing? It's like, should it go to you? And then you determine what comes forward, or should everything just be forwarded and then the board determines yea or nay?
I would highly recommend not forwarding you all the gazebo reservations.
Oh, no. Okay, no, I'm thinking special event permits is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, of course, special events come back. This, I mean, just
Yeah, no, never mind. I was I was
I haven't seen just, we should consider a policy. It gives everyone broad guidelines. And anything that is special, one is special.
Yeah, and I don't think that the policy would have to be super detailed, but you would have to refuse an application for some kind of good cause. And that could be broadly interpreted, but I guess that's something that you guys
Yeah, I think we can use the current policy as it stands. And then if, you know, I guess, as this goes across, I haven't refused a single person yet. So I don't think this will be a huge issue.
Okay. Yeah, but we can we can certainly edit it to say per application and per town guidelines.
Great.
Okay.
And document, document, document.
Uh, seven dash seventy-six, just out of, just for my curiosity, I, does this come up much?
It can because some of our public parks are remote and trails. And sometimes people think they can camp there, but it's not lawful.
All right, that says we could do it with a permit.
Well, yeah, if they get a permit. And actually, we've granted permits in kind of a distant pass where a boy scout group wanted to camp down there by the pool. So we did grant a permit for that. And we also had a bicycle group who applied for a permit and camped down there once. History, history, history.
This is sort of leading me down the same path of the last. How do I do where you came out and used permits for this? Where do they go to? And I just administratively approve it?
At that time, they came before the board.
Okay.
Because it was a special event.
That makes sense.
And so this, this is, I'm reading is, I just give it some kind of application and then approve it administratively.
And we could do a policy that would give you broad guidelines for that.
It seems like it'd be so rare that bringing it to you guys might be a waste.
It was quite rare. I mean, I can remember two instances in twenty years.
Okay.
So it's been a while.
Yeah, and there's definitely room. If, you know, it's always better to sort of anticipate problems. If this becomes a problem and we need to set out, I mean, if you already have an internal guideline and policy, that would be great, but if there's something that we need to amend the code to sort of deal with a problem that the town's having, that can be done as well.
Another quick question if you don't mind. Did you accept this back in the day?
I have no recollection of that. I don't think there was one because it was more of a charity type
Okay.
thing, but we could certainly entertain that on the fee schedule.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
If we're issuing a permit, in that case, there is administrative time span on draft.
And if it's a special event, then it's a special events fee, so.
If I may interject something on this?
Please.
On seven there seventy-six, could we change the language slightly to include recreational vehicles, pop-up campers, things like that?
I want to say that
That be covered under any other structure?
I want to say that there's a specific provision, um.
There there is a specific provision. I just, I read all the stuff this afternoon. And once again, I would, I'm fairly easily confused anyway. But was a little confused by the number of markups and stuff. And if there is a specific provision, that's fine. I'm just concerned with the camping issue.
Right.
Because, you know, I need I need a way to enforce it. Basically, what I meant is
I want to say in the news provision, no recreational vehicles, campers, et cetera, allowed in public right of way. But let me just get back to you on that because I do think that we address it somewhere else and it's, I'm just not at the top of my head thinking about it.
No problem. I don't need to slow down the process too.
Yeah, I've written it down. I do think it is somewhere else. Seven dash seventy-nine, this is another section. I'm not sure if it really comes up much. But sort of sale is on public property would require a permit.
Is this in reference to like a food truck or something like that?
I mean, it could, it could be a food truck or a food cart. Also, anybody sort of just walking around the park and selling things? Maybe that happens in more you know, urban areas, but I'm not sure how much is encountered in the town.
When it was written, the original one, they they really did refer to them as peddlers a while ago. And then we tried to update it for food trucks in another section.
Yeah, I do think we incorporated a section on mobile vendors. I think it's maybe chapter five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can we back up on there?
Yes.
That we're right there. Vehicles prohibited on trails, it should be unlawful, yada, yada, yada. Where marked prohibited, I think we ought to probably delete that as none of our trails allow any vehicles motorized, non-motorized, and mountain bikes on any of our trails. If I'm wrong, let me know.
Yeah.
Totally got lost. Can you turn off the acres so we can hear it again?
Sorry about that. My bad.
I was sitting down in my head. I'm glad that everyone else heard it.
I've got I've got earbuds. I've got earbuds in, so I'm hearing y'all about that. Basically, the, uh, my understanding is none of these type vehicles are allowed on any trails, whether marked or unmarked. And I don't know, it seems like another expense to the town to start marking all our trails with no vehicles motorized, non-motorized, or mountain bikes allowed on trails.
Yeah, so, I mean, just looking into the future, would there be any? I guess it's hard to anticipate if there would be any public trails where mountain bikes or any other kind of like ATV or anything would be allowed.
That's a board question, not mine.
Yeah.
No, this time there's not. We could always revisit it if someone wanted to build a mountain bike trail.
Okay.
It's all different issue.
Yeah, so we can edit that. We can edit that just to say on trails in the town, if the trails aren't marked right now. Yeah, and just to avoid, you know, the additional expense. I think that was the town marshal, right? I don't have everybody pulled up right now. Yeah, we can, we can do that to answer your question. Um, so the alcoholic provision section, it's my impression that that's in line with the town's procedure. But let me know if I'm wrong about that.
Right, it looks mine, yeah.
Okay. So this last article, um, sort of, and I think this might have even come up recently. I think the, maybe the town is considering selling some land, is it? Not sure if it came up. What we did was we removed, um, there were some sections that required specific presentations to be made when considering selling or purchasing land. And this is still in effect, but that is something that we removed into a separate document to sort of be housed as another one of those town policies. Um, that does not have to be included in the code because I think there was a couple pages of you do a first presentation, you do a second presentation, you consider X factors. I think the basic factors are still included in the code right here. But that was just done for a bit of simplicity and cleanup.
Once we get to a good stopping point, Katie, on Andre Bracken is on online here and he's following through.
I think we're right at the end here.
So this is good. We made it through four chapters.
And and looking at the time, we should have Andre's comments and then go on to the next video. So.
Sorry, Angie, I didn't hear your your question or your request. What did you say that we should do when we get to a good stopping point?
Well, Andre Bracken, he's the engineer that's been working on a number of projects in the first year of the town. He's on on my, he just had a couple of comments that added.
Okay.
So whenever, whenever you're ready, Andre, if you want, he's going to make it out.
Andre, you're muted. I don't know if you can hear us or.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just unmuted myself. Um, I, I really couldn't hear what you all were saying. I had sent Angie an email, um, letting her know that I, I, I'd be happy to, um. Donate my time to help with the, the code rewrite, especially chapters involving, uh, public works. Road wide right of way and all that. I, I'd done all that for El Paso County, uh, some years ago as county engineer. And, um, I, hearing this, it's like, uh, hearing all the same, uh. Dealt with all the same exact things and for the county and, um. So there, there, there's a lot of stuff that is, it's real cookie cutter. It's, uh, a lot of this stuff's pretty quick. It's really an update and, um. I just let her know, I'd, I'd be glad to, uh, help with that pro bono and, and just to help out and, uh, just cuz I have an interest in it. If you would like.
I think we'd be thrilled to accept your help, Andres.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and Andre, I don't know if you have my email, but, um, I'd definitely be welcome to looking at any of your suggestions.
Great, great. That sounds fantastic.
Okay, maybe we can get together then.
I'll send a, a group email together in time to, right now.
Um, is there anything you wanted to look at right now?
Um, no, I mean, not, uh, particularly, I mean, just the, the discussion on the, um. The parades, for example. The, what we do in the county or El Paso County was. You know, es- essentially what you're doing is the, the town owns these rights of ways. They, they own the roads. And you're permitting someone to basically take over exclusive use of a road right of way, so for some period of time. So i- it's not necessary to go into a lot of detail with, with that review, but it's essentially a safety item. So the, in the county's case, you know, someone at the sheriff's office was involved with that review of that. So I would, I would think Virgil would still be involved in looking at that from a security, safety standpoint. Cuz you, you do have to deal with, uh, traffic control, um, with, with a parade. Uh, the other side of that is the public work side that needed to look at it. And essentially, we developed a form, just like you're talking about, which is a permit. And the permit did have essentially all the criteria for that you would, uh, you'd write up and so that you can hand that to an applicant. They would see exactly what was involved and what they needed to provide, um, and so it was a quick little process. But it just, a- as you started talking, it, it, you know, all the, you know. The, the light bulb came on and I, I kinda had the answers, I thought, and, you know, I, so I, I'm just glad to help out on. On items that I, I think I could, uh, help speed up the process or help provide a quick answer on. But, um, yeah, as far as, uh, the, the other items, um, I, this is the first time I've actually looked at any of this, so. I think what I'd like to do is kind of digest it and, uh, see where you're at and, um. If I could just kind of provide you some, uh, some written comments on the various sections that, uh, is. That kind of speaks to me that I, uh, can help out on. If that works.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful, um. You know, both where we might need to add sections in the code or. Maybe it sounds like updating the town's policies on. The criteria that are gonna be considered with parades and processions and then also with, um, private functions at the gazebo. Um, so that would be really helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Andre. Thanks, Katie. Is there anything else tonight?
Um, no, I think that's a good stopping point, so I think, so we went through seven and, um. We got through eleven and eighteen and then chapter four as well, right?
Yeah.
Four, seven, eighteen, okay.
Okay, easy ones are done.
Yeah, and a little bit of a rocky start, uh, but I think that we'll sort of have it smoothed out for next time, so, um, thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you. I think we got into a good rhythm. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is correspondence. Do we have anything? No, I don't remember having anything.
No, sorry, I was.
You're just moving Katie off. Uh, the next item is reports, Catherine.
Seems like I had something to report. I know, um, you know, I'm hoping to hear something about the, the. What is it, the CD?
Oh, right.
Grant, rant. Soon. But. Cuz we've, we've gotten like, we've, we've made it past the essential hurdles to start with. So looking promising, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it looked promising, but yeah, the last word is always slow.
And of course, the, uh, code rewrite is, wanna affect, um, some things with the planning commission, not in a major way, but hopefully will just. Help things. Um, I'm really curious about the word count before and after this. Cuz it looks like things have really been condensed and the language is so much clearer and, um. Yeah, so, uh, I think it's just gonna be, you know, much more useful.
Overdue.
Yeah. And, um, sorry, I'm sure I had something else.
We can circle that. Just, I'll let you serve the right to say, wait, I remember. Margaret, can you have a report?
Um, no, not a report, just a couple of comments. First, I want to say thank you for everyone involved so far in this. Update for the rewrite project because it's a very big, big thing and, and like I said, you know, we're, we'll. We'll eat the elephant one bite at a time and we'll get there. Um, and then just personally, I want to remind everybody that Brock Day is coming. I still have volunteer places for people to do stuff, so please. Show your love for the community and, and try to help just an hour here or there for Brock Day because. You know, we're really, we're excited that it's our eighty-third. We're keeping it going and it looks like our parade. Is gonna be really good this year because everybody's like. You know, I just, I just got an email this afternoon that, um, the El Paso County Mountain Color Guard, or not Mountain Color Guard, but the Mountain Patrol. Is scheduled to come again. I just got that confirmation this afternoon, so, so we'll have, we'll have definitely horses for Brock Day. She's, she's, she's not volunteered for one of the essential duties. She's the official pooper steward. It's an essential, it's an essential duty. Essential personnel.
All right, thank you. Chris?
No, ma'am.
All right, I will reserve. Well, I have one report and then I will reserve for later. Um, I did meet with. A group of regional mayors, um, we discussed. Regional water, which had no effect on us, but it was still interesting because you never know, sometimes what affects. Our neighbor sooner or later has an impact on us. Um, this won't, they were talking about, um. There's a well farm out in the Black Forest area. We don't get our water from there. Uh, additionally, they just talked in general about. Regional plans, regional transportation. And although we're in some ways an outlier to our neighbors that go from Fountain Colorado Springs Monument Palmer Lake. I'm always grateful that they do include us and, um. And we are permitted a seat at the table. I think it's very valuable and. It's nice to garner that respect from some of the big players at the table like Colorado Springs. And we don't have bigger problems, but we have very similar problems. Pretty interesting. Um, Matt, do you have a report?
Oh, yeah, um.
I remembered something. I'm going to ADA coordinator tree.
Great, great. That needs to be done. So excellent. One more report back on that. I appreciate it.
Try to be good.
All right, Matt.
Cool. Uh, I just had one report for tonight. I was gonna detail the steps for filling the vacancy on the board. Um, I've shared this with the members of the board and the applicants for the position, but I also make sure the public can understand what we're gonna be doing with the next couple of these. Today, we're going to be hosting a work session as shown on the agenda. Um, that work session will host two interviews, the two applicants that we received. Um, they will be asked, uh, essentially eight questions, the same questions. Um, and, uh, no formal actions taken in this work session, just simply the interviews themselves. Uh, we, to satisfy the sixty-day requirement to avoid hosting elections, um, we will need to host a special meeting. Um, before the end of the month to do the appointment of candidate if there is one selected. Um, and I'm recommending that, that they be seven twenty-seven. It would only host essentially one agenda item, BOT appointment. Um, vacancy or something along those lines. Um, and what would end up happening is a, a member of the board would, uh, move to appoint. One of the, the candidates, um, and they, should they get a second, it goes for a vote, if they're voted majority, they are appointed to the seat. Uh, and then there's another step, uh, at the next meeting, eight, ten. Uh, that newly appointed candidate would take their oath of office and then actually take their. I guess the most important thing is at the next regular.
I've got like a twenty-twenty calendar.
I'm pretty sure it's eight, ten, but the most.
Well, that's the second Tuesday. Usually we do the first.
Okay, so first you.
Yeah.
The most important thing is the, the next regular meeting following the special meeting where that person, if they are appointed, um, they would then do their oath of office.
Okay.
That, anything further? Angie, any reports? All right, Virgil?
Uh, let me see if I can unmute without Green Acres playing in the background. I'm gonna shoot off my mouth at this meeting. Okay, uh, I'm excited about this code rewrite, bringing some common sense into the code. Uh, I don't wanna hand out any more summons for using mousetraps in your own home, which is technically illegal right now. But, uh, everything's going good. Looking forward, Brock Days, we're gonna have women in staff, but we'll make it happen.
Figure it out.
And thank you for meeting with me. I'm going, going over the safety protocols and. Everything that we need to take care of. I appreciate it.
Not a problem at all. We're gonna make sure that everybody's safe and has a good time.
Yep, sounds great. Looking forward to it. Um, committee reports, was Mr. Douglas on about fire mitigation?
Yes, I'm, I'm on, Mayor. Um, I'll, I'll need for, uh, Matt to, uh. Show the PowerPoint, the, the, it's part of the packet.
I got you, dude. Give me one quick second. All right, go ahead.
I, I'm not seeing it.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a bonehead mover there. I forgot to share.
Um, so I, I, I realize the night is long and we still have a long way to go, so I'm gonna. Try to move through this very quickly, be succinct and, uh, cover, cover everything. Um, this, this photograph that's on the, uh, title slide here is the Iona Scott project that we keep talking about. And, um, the reason I put it on here is, uh, it's, you know, it's just so clear, uh. How serious the problem is on this bit of land, um, and, and of course. The residents and stakeholders of Green Mountain Falls are reporting, uh. A lot of concern over, uh, dead and dying trees all over the mountain, but this is one that is right in the midst of. Of our town that needs to be taken care of, uh, as soon as we possibly can. So if you will move on, Matt. Uh, the things that I'm gonna, uh, cover tonight are the CUSP grants that we, uh, introduced last. Uh, Board of Trustees meeting, the Iona Scott Avenue project, the two thousand twenty-one budget implications. Uh, of the CUSP grants, um, and also private property owner assistance. Um, so give some, uh, some recommendations to some of our private property owners who have been asking for guidance. And then finally, fire mitigation advisory committee active projects. Uh, next, Matt. So, um, in the last Board of Trustees meeting, we talked about a CUSP grant for forty acres. Um, and that grant is funded, but we're still waiting for the formal award letter. From the Colorado State Forest Service in August or September. Uh, I did get a note from, um, Michelle Conley. Last night that on this particular grant. Um, fifteen acres. Uh, the, the initial fifteen acres will be used or, or will be the Thomas Trail working east. And that will, uh, the, the project is scheduled to be completed in two thousand twenty-one. Um, and, and that's expected to be implemented some, sometime between September and November. Uh, most of that grant is matching funds from Colorado Springs Utilities with the balance coming from the, uh. Historic Green Mountain Falls Foundation and the Town of Green Mountain Falls for five thousand dollars. Um, the grant specifies that it will be town-owned and H, uh, Historic Green Mountain Falls Foundation. Parcels adjacent to the part, uh, the Pike National Forest, uh, and to follow along the Thomas Trail. Um, and as I said, the CUSPs go is to complete fifteen acres along the Thomas Trail in two thousand twenty-one. So, bottom line here is there's forty acres. We have a commitment as a town for five thousand dollars. Obviously, all forty acres are not going to be in two thousand twenty-one. So that means that, you know, some portion of five, of that five thousand dollars will not be spent, uh, so you can. And, and I'll do reconciliation of that in a few minutes. So if you will, uh, Matt, move to the next slide. So, uh, clarification, this grant for fifty-three acres is pending. It is funded. But we have not received an award, uh, uh, letter as of this time. It was scheduled for July nineteenth. Uh, and a start date of August sixteenth. Um, Michelle believes that that's probably aggressive and that that will slip somewhat. Uh, and another clarification here is this grant actually goes through two thousand twenty-five. Um, it is unlikely that we will spend the sixteen thousand nine seventy-five in year one of this grant. In this year since we're so late in the year, uh, but that, that money was earmarked, uh, for this particular grant. And there are thirty-five out, thirty, a thirty-five hour in-kind match. Um, that, uh, Michelle will, will, uh, provide to us a, uh, a document that we can use to track our time. Um, we will focus, once that grant is, uh, is awarded, on the smaller tracks. And things that can be done quickly, uh, toward the end of, of this year. Um, okay, next, um. This is an update on the Iona Scott Avenue project, uh, which we saw the picture of earlier. Uh, on Ju- July first, that we received a draft of the, uh, contracted scope of work to perform a tree mortality assessment. On that land, uh, that, that was necessary, uh, prior to beginning to cut in trees. Um, it included the Colorado State Forest Service coming in, doing the assessment and marking trees for removal. At an estimated cost of five hundred dollars, uh, that was approved by the Board of Trustees on June first at that meeting. Um, town manager told me that we needed to have a legal review on the submitted contract from the, um, Colorado State Forest Service. Um, I asked for an update on that last week. I asked for an update on that last week. I have, at this point, had no response from the town manager. Uh, when I can expect that that legal review will be completed. And I, I think it's interesting that we're getting a legal review on something that's going to cost us somewhere between three and five hundred dollars and legal review will probably.
Is irrelevant. The contract is reviewed.
Okay.
I'm sorry, moving on.
Oh, okay. Upon approval and acceptance of the contract, assuming there's no, um, changes, we'll contract with Steve Rudolph to come and perform the assessment. And following that, we'll determine, uh, kind of the scope of work and timing, uh, and whether or not it will be done by volunteers or it will be included in the CUSP grant. And then move on, Matt. Uh, the budget implications, we had set aside seventeen thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-one for fire mitigation. Most of that was committed to, um, the fifty-three acre grant that CUSP was working on. Uh, the way it looks right now on the forty acre grant that we have a five thousand dollar commitment, only a third will be spent this year and on the fifteen, uh, on the fifty-three acre grant, it's not possible to determine at this point how much of the seventeen thousand dollars will be spent this year. It depends on the timing of the award and how, how quickly they can mobilize and get work started. I'm, you know, I, I believe that, uh, that we should consider, uh, taking any unused budgeted funds in two thousand twenty-one uh, and, and making those available in, in two thousand twenty-two's budget. And I think, uh, it would be our, recommendation to the board at this point that we start thinking in terms of at least twenty thousand dollars for funding, uh, matching grants in two thousand twenty-two on top of whatever we roll over from, uh, from twenty-one, simply because we have a lot of work that is now getting queued up uh, for next year. So I just thought I'd give a little look ahead from our perspective so that, uh, as, as we start planning for two thousand twenty-two, uh, that would be in the back of everybody's mind. Okay, Matt, next. Um, Michelle Conley in our last Fire Mitigation Committee meeting, um, addressed the issue of private landowners desire for assistance. And what she has advised is that, people who are, you know, live in town and are, and are neighbors, you get together, some of your neighbors that have adjoining land or contiguous, contiguous plots of land and include those people who might be interested in a cost-sharing program with us. Develop a list, include name, property owner, address, approximate lot size. You can then submit that to CUSP for a request for a cost-sharing funding. If money is available, uh, then the CUSP will come and do an assessment and enter into separate contracts with each, each, each of the landowners. Uh, but they really want a, a contiguous tract of land that they can work on uh, at one time. If funding is not available, they'll use the list of the, uh, property owners who've submitted requests for cost-sharing assistance and they will use that to apply for future grants. So that's, um, an answer to a question that we are getting more frequently from our, um, residents and property owners in Green Mountain Falls is what help is available. So this is one way that people can get involved and, and sort of start taking control of their own situation and with their neighbors come up with a program, uh, to get assistance. Okay, finally, um, Matt, these are the things that the Fire Mitigation Advisory Committee is currently working on. We're developing a notification evacuation plan for approval by the Board of Trustees, uh, which we would recommend will be posted to the G M F, uh, website upon approval. We expect that, we're in final stages now. We're expecting that uh, for final approval in our next meeting. Uh, we are developing a risk assessment map of the town and prioritizing, uh, to prioritize and develop future fuels mitigation for funding and execution. We're exploring, um, methods of providing education to all the residents and stakeholders regarding methods of fuels mitigation. So basically, um, a education program for financial incentives and assistance. And, uh, finally, developing volunteer programs to provide assistance for fuel mitigation. Um, I did have a map that, um, Michelle provided to me unfortunately, uh, last night. So we were past the deadline, uh, for getting that in, but, but it is a map that we'll be using to, to, um, guide our future efforts that shows where mitigation has already occurred by lot uh, and by tract of land. And then we're also doing a risk assessment map that will be used to overlay that. So we'll be able to see where our highest risks are relative to where mitigation has already been done that we'll be able to use going forward for planning purposes, uh, and prioritizing, uh, fuels mitigation programs. And with that, I am done and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right, board, any questions for Mr. Douglas?
No, I don't have a question, but thank you for the, for the concise update. It's very much appreciated.
Yep, good work.
You're welcome. I, I wish we'd had the maps that I could have shown, but we'll, we'll put that in the next E O T meeting.
Next time. And we'll be, maybe we'll have a little more time, but good work and I'm glad you're on it.
Great work. Thanks, Dave.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is for persons not, persons who are present but not on the agenda. If you have something you would like to bring to the board, please approach. Time limit is three minutes. State your name for the record. You do not state your address. And as always, recall that we cannot, um, reply or engage in the conversation. Sometimes we can direct staff. I know. All right, anyone?
Wasn't there, Louis?
I don't have a list. I, I wasn't on the computer.
On my desk.
I got you.
Okay.
No worries.
I wasn't there. I was in the court.
I'll get it reprinted, by the way.
All my homework. My homework, but it's on my desk. I really did review a ton of stuff, too. I know it doesn't look like it, because I have nothing. I reviewed a ton of stuff and it's all on the file on my desk.
And say, look what I did.
And it was way too late to go back and get it.
All right, there's our list. Randy Morales. You, um, stand there. Let's real.
Good evening and thank you for letting me speak. I'm Randy Morales and I'm worried for our town. Over the past few months, Green Mountain Falls Town Manager Andrew Strain has attacked and bullied people via email and Facebook. This seems to happen anytime someone expresses their concerns with the parking unit situation, the deteriorating road conditions, snow removal was fast winter and essentially anything, anyone that expresses concern with how the town is being run. Specifically, I'd like to address the chronic, uh, chronic unprofessional behavior exhibited via Facebook on January sixth, July sixth, and Monday. Angie has attacked multiple people on Facebook in a professional capacity by name calling, cyberbullying, attempting to publicly humiliate people and shame them to speak out with their concerns. To quote a few of her statements, she's called people childish, people warriors, claiming that people never show up to meetings, that people hide behind their keyboards and don't want to be part of the solution, that people cry wolf and are complaining. And if anyone who expresses their concerns on the G M F politics page is just creating petty drama, I have witnessed her doing this to Marilyn Brown, Chris Watten, Rip Van Gundy last week, and Brenda Brown, just to name a few. The same unprofessionalism was right. Angie was even commented on back in January sixth, so it is not a new occurrence. The pertinent screenshots have been emailed and provided for reference. Facebook has become the de facto town square. However, Angie's current conduct on it has recently been highly unprofessional. And it's not just limited to Facebook, because I also received a very unprofessional email from her on June thirteenth stating she didn't come to one meeting during the entire year, which is incorrect. And it would be nice if we would stop crashing us on Facebook. It's child behavior. It essentially amounts to this. She is cyberbullying anyone that expresses their concerns or that doesn't agree with how the town is currently being run. This behavior is extremely unprofessional. It is unacceptable for any town employee to be interacting with citizens in this way and even more so for somebody that is in a supervisory capacity to set that is setting the example for the rest of the town staff. Please address this hostile behavior. I ask that she formally be reprimanded and retrained on properly communicating with the public, that this complaint be entered into her file and that her contract not be renewed. Furthermore, I ask that more clear communication guidelines be put into place for all G M F employees and board members. The answer isn't to say nothing or to attack citizens, but to rather communicate clearly and transparently with the town that you serve. This all the further highlights the need to get rid of this expensive position in favor of returning to the trustee liaison system in the form of G M F government that worked well for decades. Please do not consent or put into effect a new contract for the town manager at this time. Additionally, do not consent to a one-time lump sum of six-month salary if the position and contract is terminated. That saddles Green Mountain Falls with a prohibitive cost. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Rocko?
I guess we kind of have the same pickles. The latest town manager misbehavior was recently showcased on social media. As was just offered, the town manager engaged in name-calling and started bullying. The exact behavior the mayor points out as unacceptable by frustrating town residents. Obviously, the town manager is responsible for their own behavior, but who is accountable? Trustees, mayor, the buck stops with you. I was appalled but not shocked by the town manager's recent social media interactions. Such unprofessional interactions and lack of self-control are not new. Back in December, Mayor Newberry and trustee Peterson were copying the town manager's reply to my public records request. I have it here. I've already responded to you and we won't be wasting any more staff time today on demands from you. I'll be bringing the town marshal in on these communications going forward. Mayor, trustee Peterson, can you explain why the town manager used the threat to bring in the marshal for a simple public records request? Did you share this interaction with the other trustees? If not, why not? When such derogatory information would be critical to contract negotiations. I find it ironic that the mayor's recent forms of government paper slammed the trustee liaison system, which worked for generations in our town. As quote, resulting in angry citizens, frustrated employees and trustees feeling that they were always backfilling against a crisis. What's changed by having a town manager other than a huge unsustainable expense of salary and benefits and incurring the added unacceptable delays in bureaucratic gymnastics? Also, look to the fire mitigation presentation where the town manager stated the legal reviews required by an attorney and then no response to the fire mitigation committee on the timing. It's simply unacceptable as our force turns to pendulum. Trustees, please don't double down on the losing proposition that is the town manager's system. The only winners appear to be the lawyers and those creating unneeded bureaucracy in our town.
Thank you. Todd Dixon.
You're very patient.
Todd Dixon, I don't know if you're. My comments are about the U S code. I've got some observations from the staff in twenty-three, the experience in this town. And I have some, you know, a couple, uh, things for consideration. First, under Article two, second, twenty-two, twenty-four, committees or under Article of that's fourteen, you're married, correct? I would consider adding the ability of the D O T to delegate certain activities to committees for a written memorandum of agreement, memo, but specifically defined with committees may do. This can include the line contract with things like mowing and cleaning, et cetera. The special authorization that can be activated will be activated by the D O T. For example, if the R T committee could completely oversee the mowing and parking operations, then it's activated. Another consideration, let me, um, take those back to the, to the issue with, with that staff. Something that when the D O T activates us, partner handles can actually help maintain those that are adjacent to the property by using water and washing them to kind of fill in the gaps. Unfortunately, with not having the good idea of that, we would have to put in some indemnity for the town, if that would have happened. Yeah, these are things that could be just activated or deactivated as needed. Uh, okay, aside from those, there's some other comments on there. I'm gonna, uh, go over that. Article two, section two, dash fifty-one, both in the public notice, the wording language that's in there that makes it sound like all funding permission items would now have to be posted nine days prior to the public hearing, because I think they took out those specific ordinances, as I was saying, all public hearings need nine days. So they may want to think about that. Are the six forces? We need to make sure that if we have a zoning law stoppage, we're looking at the two, the two way. Chapter eight, Article one, uh, section eight, dash forty-three through eight, dash forty-eight deals with parking and this doesn't look like it's at all correlating what we're actually doing. So does need to be on the map. Chapter one, Article one, annexation. As we went through it, what we did through the annexation here, we made a, put in a parking and traffic plan. I didn't see that in the new meeting. At some point, we may also want to consider including parts of a wildland urban ten place, but it's that box section. And I would emphasize parts because you can't do all of it. And then, and for me, I didn't get the number, but if something deals with vegetation about the impurities is high and I would suspect of, like, most of the, I don't agree with watching, even do that. And that's all, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, David Douglas.
Um, thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm gonna keep my comments short. I think, uh, the people who've gone before me and who will come after me tonight are expressing, uh, the things that are great concern to me as well. You know, it, uh, it comes a point where there's so much evidence, um, that's, that something is wrong. Then it almost demands action. Uh, and, and from my perspective, there is so much compelling eggs, evidence of the lack of professionalism and professional qualification of our current pan town manager that, I can't even imagine. even imagine that our Board of Trustees would be considering offering her an extension or renewal of the contract that was in the packet. And I will end my comments there and say that I support everything that's been said before me and probably everything after.
Which leads me to Lamar Matthews. Thank you, David.
Lamar Matthews, 11145 Honda. I speak tonight to advocate a return to the trustee liaison management system we had previously. I want to leave the temporarily grant funded experiment with the town manager system behind. There are some reasons, as fast as I can go in three minutes. Number one, during our busiest building season, the planning commission did not meet for 63 days from May until July. Previously, the planning commission met every two weeks during building season. By ordinance, only the town manager has the power to call planning commission meetings, not the planning commission chairperson. As a result, we went without access to permits for 63 days. Number two, under the town manager system, Green Mountain Falls is not enforcing the municipal code control of nuisance trees. The required notices are no longer being sent to homeowners to make them aware of diseased trees that need to be removed, and the trees are not being removed. Notices went out in previous years, and dangerous trees were removed. Number three, after first seeing the issue presented in a May 4th BOT meeting, the BOT approved a desperately needed environmental investment of $500 on Scott Iona Avenue's on June 1st. The required town manager approval expense is still languishing in the legal department now seven weeks after its approval by BOT. BOT approval was enough under the trustee liaison system. Number four, over a three-week period this month, legal invoices have totaled over $10,000. This did not happen under the trustee liaison system. The town manager system seems to require extensive legal work. Number five, in previous years of the trustee liaison system, the roads were better maintained, the pool was repaired timely, staffed and open, restrooms were working and open, the parks were mowed, and the net was up on 10 floors. Number six, in 2013, we spent $72,000 for administrative employee salaries and benefits. Last year, $161,000. This year, $210,000. I humbly ask that the BOT does not approve the $84,000 for the town manager's salary alone, then plus benefits, and especially that we do not provide six months of pay if terminated. Please do not sign that contract or afford this. Number seven, tonight's ordinances put the town manager in control of any town emergencies. This is over and above the mayor's power, or the marshal's power, or any other town official. The manager tells us that she is already overwhelmed and needs to hire more staff. Basic services I previously mentioned are not getting done. Is it wise to put the town manager in charge of emergencies by ordinance? Please reconsider this. The town manager system of government has created a monster of bureaucracy that has rendered our small town powerless, thawed down by bureaucratic ordinances that make doing the business of the town impossible. I implore you to return to the trustee liaison system of town government, which was not perfect, but worked so well for generations. Our experiment with the town manager system is a failed one, which is no longer funded by grants. We need to join the many other Colorado towns our size and have a trustee liaison system again. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Lamar. At this time, we are going to take a recess. We are going to enter into executive session. This is for discussion of contract negotiation contracts and personnel. It's CRS. I know you have it.
CRS 24-6-14.
That is a motion. Is there a second?
Second. There, I believe there's additional public comment.
That's all I have on my list.
10 minute floor clock. I have a statement that will take me less than a minute.
My approach.
My understanding is that employment positions for Green Mountain Falls is public information, including contract positions and salaries. How can this information be obtained so we can compare and contrast how our tax dollars could be more efficient spent? I would like to see Green Mountain Falls prioritize the cost of services like road maintenance and other needs in the community over salaries for positions like town manager or planner. This all used to be done by our team, but I am also curious, and would like to understand if there's opportunity for review of town manager contract in a public one.
All right, thank you. So there's motion on the table to enter into executive session.
I was confused. It sounded like you wanted to hold a recess before the executive session.
Sorry, I'm making a motion to recess into an executive session. Is there a second?
A second.
If there's no private discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Chris. This is for discussion of personnel issues, which we do discuss in consecutive session.
Or again, I gotta get everybody in the waiting room.
Or, or we can.
Can we leave the room?
Yeah, but you need Chris.
Yeah, well, wait till you're not with us. Bring him along.
Okay. Everybody, I'm gonna have to move you to the waiting room for the time being. I'll bring you back if we come back into session.
Yes. Thanks for that.
Yeah, they're gonna be, you guys can stay.
Okay, Chris, can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect, okay, I'm gonna go, I'm moving the computer, so everybody's leaving the room for the exact session. Give me one quick sec, okay?
No.
Awesome. Good to go.
All right, so at this time, we will reconvene the town of Green Mountain Falls Board of Trustees meeting. We are back in regular session. As a reminder, board, everything that's discussed in executive session stays in executive session. The time is 10:50. And the item before us is town manager contract.
Okay, do we need to just review anything?
We shouldn't have anything to review, because it is personnel we did review and negotiate in executive session. We do need to, as normally, this is approved during consent agenda. We pulled it out of consent agenda. Do you have anything for any discussion? And or you can make a motion. Is Chris on?
Well, I am going to assume that we have a marked up copy with the changes that were negotiated.
We do.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So I would like to move to accept and approve the negotiated town, the contract for town manager with the revisions that were agreed upon.
There is a motion. Is there a second? I will second that. Is there any private discussion on the side?
I have a, I would just like to say in light of the public commenting, and I do realize there's some time constraints, some of the options that are listed within this contract, but I think that can be worked around. I'd like to possibly delay this just for a little while for the revisions to be set in and sent back out with the next agenda so that people can see the changes that were considered. I don't, you know, in, in light of, you know, all of the comment that I heard, you know, I, I heard people opposed to the, the whole structure of it, and people opposed to the personnel. And I think maybe, you know, I don't think we should ignore those comments. I think the, the issue of having a town manager or not, I think that's a larger issue that probably needs to be decided on a larger scale, like a vote among the people and whatnot. If that's something that needs, that wants to be pursued by whatever means it is to get that as a question, if that's the intent of enough people in the town. But as it stands, we do have the town manager in place, and, you know, it, it, it might have boohooed us perhaps to have, to see what else is out there, you know, to, to fulfill the position and not necessarily continue with the employment of Ms. Spring. You know, my comments on, that's kind of my comments on that. I think, you know, this, this, this agreement will lock us in. I would like to maybe entertain if that was some, something that would be amenable to have kind of an outreach and see what else is out there and available, just to make sure we're maintaining, you know, the best employee for the position that we can, not, you know, nothing to say that, that Ms. Spring is not doing that. But as a kind of check on, you know, making sure that we have the best person for the job, let's say. Those are my comments.
Chris, this is Catherine. I was wondering if you heard something different than I did. I didn't hear anyone criticize personnel who didn't also say that we don't need a town manager, that they thought, that they think that the trustee liaison system was superior. Did you hear something else?
I, I, I've heard what you've heard, and, you know, I, it just seemed to me that, and, and like I had said earlier, you know, I, that's a bigger question that really has nothing to do with what we're talking about here. You know, we do have a town manager position, we need continuity on it. You know, but in light of, you know, the feedback that I've heard, you know, we must be responsive, like I said, you know, I just, if, if that was an option that anyone would consider, just to ensure that we have the best candidate for the position. You know, we haven't, we didn't, we didn't open it up for open competition, let's say.
Yeah, I'm in a position of perpetual employment. My former contract, it automatically renew. This is a renegotiation of that contract. If that was, that will be a termination type of thing where you're looking to sever my employment with the town, which by vote, your, the board is allowed to do that, and I'll respect that transition if that should be what the board chooses to do. But it's, it's not like an opportunity for a, a open search for a new town manager with me still being in perpetual employment situation, unless you're gonna sever my, sever my.
Yeah, exactly. We can't. We aren't going to, we are not going to do a search while we have someone employed who intends to remain gainfully employed. That's a HR discussion, and the only, the only option is to separate. So the, so I appreciate your discretion, but the motion on the table is renewing the contract.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I don't see this. This is a new contract. This is not a continuation of the prior. There's no mention.
The prior contract is in effect currently, so if this contract is not renewed, that one will still be in effect. It automatically renewed two months ago, I believe, something like that, two or three months ago.
Sure, okay. And, and that's why, you know, I, I asked for a copy of the current so that I can speak.
I did provide that previously.
So the motion on the table still stands. As, as it works in Robert's Rules of Order, there's a motion, there's a second, there's discussion, and there's call for vote. So we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion. I will call for a roll call vote on renewing the contract with the corrections additions that, clarifications that were made tonight. This is fairly standard for us to approve, with the understanding that the corrections are still to be made, and we have an understanding of what those were. So, Margaret?
Yay.
Catherine?
Yeah.
Chris?
No.
And I vote yes. That contract is renewed. Let me take my mayor's privilege to say this about that, as I do sometimes.
Make sure they can all hear.
The town man, let's think of Green Mountain Falls as a business, right? We are not in the business of selling widgets, we are in the business of providing and selling services. Within our business of selling services, we have a CEO. Our CEO supervises the employees and manages the business. We have a board of directors who may or may not be paid, but they supervise the overall good as well as the town manager. It was pointed out to me rather explicitly that the town manager is equal to the CEO, the Board of Trustees is equal to the Board of Directors, and no good company runs with having a bunch of volunteers as your CEO. It's just not a practical business model. If there is to be an election to go into trustee liaison, they are certainly welcome to get the petition together and put that before a vote of the people. However, I truly hope people know what they're getting into, as no one seems too excited to volunteer to be in this position. Having been a liaison and worked in that situation for more than 15 years, we've seen a few things that absolutely have not worked. I would also point out that, yes, the attorney's bills have been higher than usual, and yes, it is because of code review. And that's what I'm gonna say about that. We are gonna adjourn this meeting because we are desperate to go into this work session because I don't like going late at night. Is there anything further? Seeing nothing, let us adjourn at 11:01, and we will reconvene with our work session. So apologies for. So apologies for that, we moved the meeting, but work session. Ask Matt, explain to us, and as you well know, we have two applicants for our vacant position, and you're still here despite the hour. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask a series of questions. We won't make any decisions until the next meeting. We are gonna ask one of you to wait in the hall while we ask the questions, and.
No, you're totally.
You're, you're in the work session.
From what I understand, there's a customary arm wrestle to choose who goes first.
You could do some more.
Right, don't take a little nap out there, something.
So, so we just scare you away, yeah, good.